Mr. Jones. Mr. Codiani.
Here.
Ms. Sossier, here. Mr. Stafford.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
This meeting is being held in compliance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Clause nineteen seventy-five, Certification of Your Services on File in the Office of the Township Clerk. Vantage written on the public community associated on the bulletin board in the municipal building, was mailed to Rankin County Times, was filed with the clerk of Mount Holly Township, and was mailed to all persons who requested and paid for such notice.
Okay, we have one thing on the agenda this evening. The capital review project for the township of Mount Holly Improvement. We don't have, we don't have help.
Okay, we have one thing on the agenda this evening. The capital review project for the township of Mount Holly Improvement. Okay, we have one thing on the agenda this evening. The capital review project for the township of Mount Holly Improvement. We don't have, we don't have help.
Okay, I'll just make the announcement for the others.
Okay, we, uh, the applicant?
Well, for application twenty nineteen dash five, four hundred Mountain View Avenue. The application for, uh, Newman's Woodson. Uh, it's a property address, four hundred Mountain View Avenue, block twenty-eight, lot ten. We are, um, the applicant is seeking a use variance to be permitted to use the property as a duplex, and they requested adjournment, uh, as is their right, because we only have five eligible members who will be able to go tonight. So if any member from the public is interested in the application twenty nineteen dash five, four hundred Mountain View Avenue, that matter won't be heard either at the reorganization meeting, which is scheduled, either...
Is it really? Good question.
Yeah, we can discuss something, but it would be either January twenty-third or January thirtieth. Um, but it would be heard at the reorganization meeting. So if anyone is interested in that, uh, application, that we adjourn with no further notice or no, no further publication. Thank you. You said...
Okay, the capital review project.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremy Knoll from Environmental Resolutions. I'm the engineer for the Mill Dam Park Improvement Project. With me is Neil Workett. He's a landscape architect. He's going to talk mainly about the design of the project. Uh, first exhibit we're going to show.
Can you swear, you and Mr. Knoll? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
He licenses his professional.
And, and your next question?
My name is Neil Workett. I'm a licensed landscape architect.
We exchanged email.
Yes, yes.
Are you a last name?
Uh, it's W E R K E T.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and Mr. Knoll is here before this board and is the engineer for the township. So important to accept his, I believe, his testimony as an expert in civil engineering and site design. Same thing for this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I'm going to let Neil was the main designer, so I'll let Neil go through the design of the project. If there's any engineering questions that you guys have, um, I'll answer those. Any of the site design questions Neil can answer.
So I, I think most of you guys are familiar with this site and the location, but we'll just give you a quick rundown. Pine Street's right here. Uh, this is Wall Street, not Mill Street as it's illustrated on the exhibit. My apologies. Uh, but it's essentially right at that intersection. We have a drive that comes into the, the park area. We have the fire station to the north here. And then you have North Branch, Rankoakas Creek, along to the southeast. And then we have, uh, Mill Dam, right there. Currently what exists on site is an existing parking lot, shared parking with residents and the park use. We have an existing, uh, demo, or an existing building which houses concessions, and I think it's used for storage now, as well as restrooms. We have an existing asphalt path that starts at the parking lot and leads back to the existing basketball courts. There is two existing playgrounds, one for a five to twelve-year-old age group, and one for a two to five-year-old age group, uh, with planter bed in the middle, uh, with some pavers and hardscaping and benches in that location. Also, we have an existing asphalt roller rink that is no longer in use. Uh, all the boards that were there have since been removed. There's an existing baseball field with the fencing around the perimeter and infield mix, kind of overgrown for the most part. And then we have the existing basketball courts in this northern part of the site, which have been kind of shut down for the time being until they are repaired. We have bleachers. We have various site amenities throughout the site. Uh, the intent to preserve those site amenities where work, our intent is to preserve as many of those site amenities as possible throughout the whole entire site. So if we're pulling something out, we're hoping to reuse it on the site as well. So that's about...
Just real quick on the demo plan, too. This, this job, as you guys have seen, it's already active. It's been awarded. Um, the contractor's been on site. They've been doing, a lot of the demo work has already begun so far. So if you've been out there, you'll notice that the asphalt rink is no longer there. The infield mix of the fencing has been removed. And then actually earlier this, uh, fall, the playgrounds were switched out through a state contract. So the playground work is actually already completed. The new playgrounds are in place.
And you'll see on the second exhibit, which is really the overall site plan, what the anticipated improvements for the project are. It's anticipated that we're going to extend the roadway into a stone parking lot to the south, um, and essentially right to the south of the existing concession building that's going to be demolished as part of this project. So we're installing new stone parking space. It's illustrating the replacement of the existing playground equipment there with new mulch. Uh, we're also planning on putting in new concrete sidewalks around the entire perimeter just to, for accessibility purposes. We're going to provide two additional accessible spaces within the stone parking lot and new sidewalks around connecting the new parking lot to both the playground area as well as the new site features that are proposed. We're going to enhance some of the intersections and the nodes with some, uh, standard concrete pavers throughout the site. Uh, we're planning on installing a lighted pavilion with grill area right there. And that, that's going to have an overhead pergola over the grill area. We're planning on installing pickleball courts, new basketball courts, and reconstructing the existing basketball courts. In addition to those site improvements, we're planning on paving a loop pedestrian path around the entire perimeter of the site. If, historically, there were walking paths around the whole entire site, which I think were essentially constructed of stone screenings. We tried to put the path in the same location that it originally was.
Historically had been, yeah.
Yeah, where it has historically been, been. We're also planning on wherever we encounter large mature trees, we will move the path around those large mature trees just to preserve them on site and not remove anything that is of great significance.
And a couple of trees that we did have to remove, they're being replaced as well. So every tree that we do remove on site is being replaced with native species, too. They're all native species trees, no, no invasives.
One thing that's a little bit deceiving about this plan is we don't anticipate reseeding this whole entire area, which is currently being used as an open field as well as the, the baseball field. It was just for illustration purposes. They're going to, the contractor is going to be required to restore any areas that are disturbed, but we don't anticipate reseeding that whole entire green area. Pretty much just wherever the limited disturbance is, and hopefully it's not too far outside.
So like in this area where the, the hockey rink was, that will all be topsoil and seeded. But this whole area now will be kind of open. So if you guys have youth recreation programs that, that they can play soccer out there, it'll be small enough for some small soccer fields or a softball field if you just had grass out there. So it's usable, open space.
All the courts, the, the proposed courts and the pavilion look, the pavilion, were located based on geotechnical information and geotechnical borings. And they've been specifically positioned in the locations that they're shown to avoid any bad soils that we may encounter during this project, just because historically we're in a flood plain. But it also appears based on our findings is that there is fill material throughout the site. So we're trying to avoid that at all costs.
It was previously a low-lying area that they filled it to put a recreational field in there. So some of the material that they used was not, was not a choice. Um, we do, the contractor has been out there. We do have a, an item in the contract for fill material. If we do find poor material, then we can remove that, exonerate it out and, and bring clean fill in. But luckily, actually, Neil was just out there today, um, and we've had, got results back from our geotechnical engineer, and the results were better than we anticipated, so that was, that was good, though.
Right?
And, and what's something like?
Yeah, and then we're going to show you guys now a rendering, um, and some shop drawings of the pavilion itself, which is the, the structure, um, that requires the construction purpose.
So in the upper left-hand side is your overhead plan view. Essentially, this pavilion's going to be thirty foot by sixty feet in size. Uh, the pergola where the grill area is about twenty-one and a half feet by twenty-seven feet. Uh, this pavilion will be lighted. We are anticipating in installing new electric service on site, and it is being sized for future expansion of any security lighting or field lighting or court lighting that may be installed in the future. In the lower left-hand side, that's just your standard elevation, kind of give you an overall idea of what it would look like from the side. We are anticipating wrapping the columns in a stone facade just to kind of pull in some additional colors and just kind of enhance the overall look of the pavilion.
Yeah, there's a sample of that here. Um, that's just kind of a couple of feet up. Ours would be all the way, correct?
No, no.
Similar to this, yeah?
Yeah, it will be, it'll be exactly like that, exactly for the height. It's about three feet in height overall. Um, and the grill area will actually have the same stone around the entire outside of the grill area. The grill area is also going to include an additional countertop in the center just for staging, and then we'll have two grills in a isolated island, more or less. Then the lighting, you can kind of see this is going to be similar lighting to what we will see installed in the pavilion. It is all being wired as part of the installation of this pavilion as well.
And on the topic of lighting, we did bid and alternate with the contractor. We did not award for lighting, um, around the, the entire park, but we set the design up that in the future, if we get more grant money, we can add the lighting to the park afterwards, so we can have night lighting for the basketball courts and for the paths around the outside. But we're constructing it so that we can just add to it afterwards. We, so we sized the, the, um, power source from P S N G came out, is doing a re, a new service for us. It's all set up so that we can power that lighting, um, in a future contract, future time when the attachment buys more money. So that pretty much covers anything. If you guys have any, um, questions regarding the project?
How many borings worked on?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve, twelve.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, so what we did was we did the first six with what the original design was. It, it essentially was based on the previous design. We're, we're extending the existing basketball courts further out, and then...
They were, instead of having these, we were going to go this way. But this area here, we found poor soils, so that's why we had to move the courts down.
And where the proposed basketball courts are, there were proposed tennis courts there. And then we, that location as well as the pavilion location, which was previously supposed to be a splash pad, we found good borings there and in the proposed basketball court location. And then we did an additional six outside of, or essentially to the right of that walking, proposed walking path. And we did another six on that side just to kind of determine what kind of soils we had.
Yeah.
And the pickleball courts were positioned in between two that found suitable soils.
Yeah, how deep were the borings?
They were about twenty feet deep.
Yeah.
What, what, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're good.
What, uh, what, uh, where, where was water?
Well, it kind of varied. Um, and I know that there were some initial, uh, soil borings done and performed as part of the drainage report, which I think varied anywhere from twelve inches to two feet.
To two feet, yeah.
And I, from what we saw, it was like three feet to four feet based on the soil borings that we got.
So to give you guys a little, little extra background on the project, the project was initially, um, there was a preliminary design done by C M E Associates, and they achieved, they got all the permitting. They put through all the permitting through D E P. They provided the stormwater report, um, and then we took over after the permits were received through the township, and we did the final design, the construction plans, the bid documents, and then construction management.
So, so, um... Water fell two to four feet-ish?
Groundwater, yeah.
Yeah.
Will that present a problem in the future, being that close to the top? Because you're going to have, uh...
Well, and those areas where the groundwater was higher was actually where you had some of the worst soils up and closer to, up and closer to the creek this way. So we, that's another reason why we kind of pulled everything tighter closer to the, um, to the fire department side, because the soils were better and drier in that area. But we are doing some drainage, drainage being done out there, too, to underdrain the areas around the courts to keep water from, um, because right now, one of the problems that you have with the basketball courts is a cracking because of unsuitable soil pull-up.
Correct.
So we're doing some drainage amendments to, to take, to alleviate those issues.
Yeah, we're proposing other drain systems over each of the courts. And then they have transport pipes that will tie into the existing...
Drainage down here.
Drainage structure right there.
I'll follow up on the structure here. Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Questions for members of the board? Dan's listening.
For the boards, uh, referencing for reference of, of members of the public, this is a capital improvement project, and the board reviews this and receives this, um, presentation. And our function is to determine whether, um, the proposed improvements are consistent with the township's master plan. Because even though it's the same, the township's project, just like we did with the Board of Education and the Fire Department. So, um, E R I is, has, has also been the, the Land Use Board's, um, planning consultant. And because they can't do both the presentation and the analysis, there was a request to, um, have the board retain a conflict planner. So the conflict planner, Mr. Remsa, has reviewed the, the plans and the design and is prepared to offer testimony as to consistency with the master plan. So, and I, he did prepare a comment letter, which, uh, Mr. Knoll, um, did submit a response to. So I can, I can swear in, Mr. Remsa, if you'd like?
We'll do that.
Mr. Remsa, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do.
Okay, and, and you're licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And you represent many boards, including, uh, nearby board Lombardson currently?
Andy Stanton.
Okay. Um, and I would say that Mr. Remsa is, he was former county...
A Director of Economic Development and Regional Planning for Burlington County. And I can tell you that January, I start my forty-third year in, in the field of, uh, planning.
Well, that's, that's amazing, that you started at the age of four. I would recommend that the boards, uh, accept Mr. Remsa as an expert in professional planning and accept his board.
We do.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Um, I distributed, uh, the, um, or prepared a, a, a report on this dated November, uh, December eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two. And, um, it, it's a three, three-page, uh, uh, report. And so what I, I did was I, I reviewed Environmental Resolution's, um, uh, set of documents for the proposed improvements. Uh, also, your two thousand and seven, uh, master plan reexamination report. And also, uh, you have an open space and recreation master plan. That was prepared in, uh, two thousand and fourteen. So those are the two master plan documents. They're the basis, uh, for, for the review. And, and in my report, I, I summarized the, uh, proposed improvements. Folks of E R I did a very good job explaining, uh, in, in greater detail of what's being proposed. Quite, quite a bit of, uh, new improvements and, uh, being made to, uh, Mill Dam Park. So on the second page, which is where we start to look at the master plan recommendations. And in your reexamination report, uh, it, uh, there are three specific ones that, uh, are, are made for, um, uh, that could be applied for, uh, recreation. The one that overall is to improve the quality of life for the residents of Mount Holly. Another one is to improve the quality of the recreational amenities. And the third is provide pedestrian ways and trails in the township. And, and clearly, these significant improvements that are being made to the park hit all three of those. They're, they're, um, improving the, the trails, um, clearly, uh, uh, removing, uh, uh, certain improvements, improving the soils underneath, and then putting back, uh, uh, new amenities, plus a, an expanded pavilion, which is very attractive. So also, um, if we look at the, um, uh, open space, uh, plan that you have, there are a couple of improvements made back in two thousand and fourteen that are not proposed on here, but, uh, uh, in two thousand and fourteen, pickleball wasn't as popular. So we can see certain, uh, certain amenities change over time. Back in two thousand and fourteen, they proposed a bandstand and, and, um, a splash park. Those are no longer needed. Uh, the newer, new, uh, amenities are what's needed for, for the town. So if we look at, um, the, uh, uh, improvements of, of, uh, of, of the proposed plans, uh, we see that Mount Holly's continuing to maintain and improve Mill Dam Park. And that was a specific recommendation in, in the open space plan. And of course, to pursue, uh, grant funding and so forth, that was the other one. I'm, I'm not familiar with how the, the, this is being funded, but nevertheless, uh, these improvements here clearly, uh, will improve the quality of life for your residents. Certainly improve the quality of the recreational facilities. And, uh, certainly will, uh, provide the trails and the other improvements that are recommended, uh, in your two master plan documents. Pretty straightforward. Um, uh, as I review it, my opinion is, uh, this is clearly consistent with, with your master plan. You, you have to make that, that decision, but, uh, as I reviewed all the documents, uh, that, that's how, what I would conclude. So, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, it's pretty simple, straightforward. Um, uh, I enjoy the opportunity to, uh, review this and present this to you. And so my, my recommendation was, would be to find this as consistent with, with your master plan documents.
Any questions for Mr. Remsa? For members of the board? Would it be appropriate, is that a public office? Any questions for members that are public for, for Mr. Remsa?
Rich Carpenter, uh, one thirty-five Yum Street, Mount Holly. Uh, got a couple of questions there. Is that the Mill Dam side or the Iron Works side?
Well, I'm, uh, if you're asking specific questions to the, um, uh, actual improvements here, I would defer that to E R I.
Okay.
But it is, it's the Mill Dam side.
Okay, and is that Wall Street or Mill Street down in?
It's, it's Wall Street, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a mispronoun there.
All right, now I'm, I got my hands straight, that's okay. That's all.
And I would add, um, since Mr. Remsa brought it up, the funding for that, there was two different funds for this site. Green Acres is the primary funding source, but there's also a Burlington County Parks Grant, which funded the, the playground portion of the project.
Excellent, excellent.
So we had two grants on the job.
So, so, so again, you're, you're hitting, your, your recommendations of, of pursuing, uh, various funding sources uh, that, that are, uh, instead of having taxpayers paying for it, it's the, uh, it's, it's those other funds.
Yes.
Got one last question. Who's going to maintain it after this is done, after it's all complete? I mean, because it just seems like a, a lot of projects are done, which is great for the kids and everybody else. But once it gets established and in a year or two, you know, not as many people get on it, et cetera, et cetera, and it just, nobody's taking care of it, and it just, you know, goes to pot like the rest of, you know, both sides as it is.
So, I can answer this, in fact, that there's, well, two parts. The first part, uh, the contractor provides a two-year maintenance bond, which we, we accept. After the project's finally completed, we get a two-year maintenance bond. At eighteen months, our office will go out there, we do an inspection to make sure all the material is holding up. Now, obviously, if, if they're getting damaged by somebody else, they're not responsible for that. But as far as the faulty, if the, the playground equipment is working properly, the rules are functioning. All that is under a two-year maintenance.
The nets and things like that.
Yeah, correct. So after that two years, if everything's okay, we release the maintenance bond. And then from, but the ongoing maintenance will be done by the Township Public Works Department, um, and the Recreation Department, too. And, uh, Sean, the Director of Public, of the Recreation Department, he's going to be out there all the time. He's, so he's going to keep an eye on, making sure if we see anything that's not being, you know, that's not operating.
And the funding has given the township enough money to maintain this project?
It, so the, the funding for it is only for the construction purposes only, but the town has to sign an agreement that they will maintain it in order to accept the funding, so...
Okay.
There's a maintenance agreement that you have to sign with Green Acres.
Thank you.
Any other questions for members of the board?
Lewis Lopez from Mahaly Gardens. I have two questions. What's the status of, of the water fountain?
Of the what, please?
The water fountain.
Is that part of this application?
Oh, the water fountain.
Is that part of this application? Are you talking about the water fountain?
No, the water fountain apart.
It's on the corner of Hyde and Mill Street. He can't speak to that.
Oh, okay, okay. Not, not a water fountain at the park.
Okay. Uh, okay, the second question says, when you go through a play, when you pass a play with just a big tree, is that considered be there?
Yeah, the, the, the tree, I think I, I think it's... It's a very large tree. Couple of large trees along this area here. There's one, two, three, four, five along here. Neil, correct me if I'm, one of them is dying, right?
Yeah, this one right here, Jason's, the past, was dying.
This one was dying, but the rest of them were being saved, correct?
Yes, correct.
So this one was diseased and dying. It's going to be removed, we're going to replace it. But these other four large trees that are right along here, they're being saved.
Okay, thank you.
And they're healthy in condition, so...
As long as the drainage goes, what's improvements? Richard Dow, two thirty-two Allen Avenue. As long as the drainage, uh, what improvements are being done? So you know historically, that whole area's been underwater in the past.
Correct, yeah.
So is there any, anything that's going to be done? A berm, anything like that?
So we're, we're adding underdrain pipes along through the whole, all the areas of the improvements through here. So as you're looking through here, there's underdrains through the courts, around the perimeters through here, and it ties into the outfall here, which you can see that, that drains out into the creek. So instead of before, everything was kind of just sheet flowing off and sitting there in low-lying areas, we're collecting it. We regraded the whole site as well, too, so you have better drainage on the sheet flow areas. It collects the pipes and, and comes out of here.
So there's not going to be any drainage, uh...
No basis, because, yeah, so because, because the soils are so, are poor and the groundwater is so high, you can't infiltrate anyway. Um, and that was done in the, in the permitting department, uh, D E P approved that, uh, you, you can't infiltrate it. The soils don't permit for it.
So if you come across, because that whole area is notorious for having, uh, you know, from being a dump in the past, different things, what you're referring to is the full.
Yes.
Fill. So there's no, where you're actually relocating or locating the different courts, um, the basketball court, whatever else you have there, um, are you doing anything? What is the base? What is it going to be?
So they're excavating the material down to the certain depth, so there is a deep, there's certain layers of D G A. You have the, for the split sections on there.
I don't have the sections, but, so essentially, it's going to be eight inches of stone.
Okay.
And then we're going to have D G A, and then we're going to have the asphalt profile. So it's about a foot of cut.
Below that, though, if we find any poor material below that, we do have a, a number to excavate that material as well and bring in clean fill material that'll go below that, that goes below the box out for the, for the base of the courts.
Did you say earlier that that additional fill would be at cost above what you're projecting?
No, we built that into the contract.
That's in the contract.
And actually, preliminary what we found so far, because we've been digging out there already, we're going to be less, we're going to have less fill material needed than what we had in the contract. So we would anticipate that, that number would reduce the contract, and you could use that for other allotments, such as benches and, you know, more slight, more slight amenities.
So around these, uh, around the, um, you know, paved areas in particular, there will... So around these, around the paved areas in particular, there will not be any, like, French drainage?
No, there is. This whole side of the court. Now, the drains don't go to the outside, to the perimeter, but the drainage system is all through, throughout the improved area.
So it's an entirely new drainage system. You're not tying, you're only tying onto, into the perimeter.
The out, correct, the out. The interior's drainage, anything we find that's out there existing is getting ripped out. We're going to tie, all this, this area here, this is all new improvement, we're going to tie into the existing outfall that goes out there. Because we were not permitted a new outfall by D E P. That would require a G P seventeen to get a new outfall permit. So we're using, utilizing the existing outfall that's there.
Which is large enough to maintain all these new improvements. You looked at the gallons, you know, the flow rate and all that.
Yes.
And part of the D E P requirements is that because we know that we're in a flood plain area, we're not allowed to fill the site at all. So you're allowed, you can only cut the fill, you can't fill it.
Yeah.
Now, if, within that two-year performance bond time period that you have, if there was a flood and the flood caused like catastrophic damage to it, now that warrant, warranty or that, I'm sorry, that warranty, that pusher was wanted, that performance bond wouldn't cover like acts of God type of thing, would it?
Well, there's certain structural integrity for the pavilion. It's rated to handle certain wind loads, certain live load. So any of that stuff that's permitted in the, in the contract, if it was above and beyond those numbers that it's calculated for, that would be different. But if we have, you know, if we have a thunderstorm, it's supposed, it's supposed to fall over, a thunderstorm that we have, you know, if we get hit from Hurricane Sandy again, that's a different...
Hurricane Sandy again. That's exactly what I'm referring to. Hurricane Sandy again, not Irene, but... Well, actually, it was Irene that flooded it out.
Irene gave us more rain.
Gave us more rain. That put us under...
Sandy hit more up north.
Sandy hit, it was wind. Sandy was more wind than it was a, a lot of headed flood. Yeah, well, moving on to your, your power. Now, you've said P S E G is out there. I'm not familiar. Is that all underground conduit or is it Polron?
No, it's Polron. There's a, so there was an existing service that fed the, remember that building was, the concession stand building?
The Patriot Building, obvious story.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, that service was taken down. That wasn't, that wasn't powerful enough to feed that we have. And then they're running, we have a new service being run. We had an electrical engineer that worked with our architect that sized that, sized the power source, grabbed the power feed to run. Like I said, the improvements for the pavilion plus future improvements for the field lighting if we need to.
We're staying on that, the power. So it will be on, it will be on aerial feed. It'll be a pole to pole.
Yeah, well, I think it's pole to pole, and then when internal to the site, then it's conduit.
So it's, but it's conduit within the whole project.
So when it comes into the site, I think the utility pole is here, Neil?
Yep, so it's, the electric was going to be positioned right here off the edge of the sidewalk here. We have an existing utility pole, and I know we have a series of utility poles that exist on site. Those are going to be removed, and then we're going to have the new service here, and then we're going to run conduit over to this location here. And then all the electric service, because we anticipated the flood hazard and being in the flood hazard zone, was that our outlets and all the electric stuff is elevated above those flood hazard elevations to make sure that we don't surge or fry the system. So we took that into consideration with the design.
And what height would that be?
So the flood hazard elevation is, I think, I believe fifteen, right around there, and that's where we had to hold it. So it is about three feet above grade, a little bit more.
Thanks, three and a half feet.
Yeah.
It's all ground faults. Any, any problem, you're going to, it's going to set through the ground.
Somewhere you have a shore situation, yeah.
Right, right, yeah. As far as the pavilions that you're putting up, was there any, any thought towards solar panels on top of them? Like, seems to be going around, you know, you could solar power that whole complex without batteries? I'm talking about this daylight.
Just daylight solar power. No, we didn't, that didn't come up, but we can ask, we can reach out to the pavilion and see if it's rated to hold solar on top of it. I mean, it's a structure. The solar panels for that area, it's not, you know, it's not super large, like I said.
Because there's enough solar panels in there, you could actually backfeed and, and, you know, backfeed to the system like it's designed, reduce the overall. I'm not sure how that would work on community as far as P S E G sets a certain rate for each light that we have in the township. So I'm not sure how the P S E G is going to rate that.
They looked, you have to have a certain amount of usage out there. I think for just the pavilion lighting alone, they might not consider that. But once we get the site lighting out there, that might be something that would trigger that, you know, get the usage up where that would be more beneficial to them. Because obviously, they're going to provide that. They have to get, make it worth it their while as well, too, so.
And the conduits would, you know, you'd have post, you'd provide post, post rings so that if anything was added on, like fiber optic cable out there for any reason at all, and maybe, you know, surveillance cameras, you know...
Yeah, except for security. We allow for that in the future too, if we want to have security lighting and cameras.
Okay. Right, not having too much, you know, knowledgeable what the heck, what's actually going on there. That's about all I have.
Hey, good questions.
Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you for the questions.
Any other questions, members of the public? Mr. Lima, I'm sorry, but I didn't ask for your comment.
Um, yeah, I guess we'll just ask about the lighting a little bit. I saw all the plans that the parking lot lighting was three thousand K, correct? Is that going in now or is that not going?
No, it's not going now.
So the only lighting that's going in right now is the pavilion?
Correct.
Is that L E D lighting also?
Yes.
And three thousand K?
I think we were trying to do twenty-seven hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Now, the, the lighting was an alternate, but the bids came back in too high, so. But it does qualify, the lighting does qualify for Burlington County Parks Grant, so that, that was the idea of the township. So in the future, the plans are already done. We can just bid it as the lighting job, and if we can get a Parks Grant, we can use that money to install it.
And the lights on the pavilion, how are they being operated?
Are they timing?
They are, I believe, trying to remember exactly, because we had issues. It might be a timer or a switch, but I can confirm that information.
Okay. Right, the only question, there are residences, you know, right along the street there.
I believe, I believe it's timer, because I don't want, they don't want, they're past a certain, they don't want people in the park to pass a certain time, so I believe it's a timer.
Well, that's the other thing, I was going to, I don't, I don't know if you guys know about what the hours are for this facility.
I don't think the hours are changing what they are now. I believe now they're dusted on, right? So, yes. So I don't think, they're not proposed to be changed unless there would be an event there that night or something, a special event, you know, that the township would hold.
So as far as details on the plan, the only thing that, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see labeling for inlets. You know, the, do not, don't, don't dump waste. So if you guys, if I missed it, then get your contractor to put a label on.
We do. It's on the chart drawn that we approved. I know I've seen on the seminole for sure.
Okay.
So I can get you a copy of the seminole too if you want that.
No, I mean, it's just...
Yeah. No, no, everything has to be D E P compliant, so.
Um, yeah, I think that's about it. I mean, plans look good, and let's enjoy it, right?
Yeah, I think it's a great incentive for the township.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, we would, because this is something that's going to be reported back to the township committee, council council. So, and we do a reservation that will adopt, and you authorize the board secretary, the solicitor to inform to the town that it is consistent with the master plan, and so that, in particular, the concern here is so that any permits that need to be obtained by the contractor can be obtained, because that, this sort of holds that process up.
Yeah, the pavilion, just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the pavilion has been delivered to the town, so they're anxious to get it installed, so that would be great.
Yes. So that was the point of squeezing the sign for this meeting. So based upon all the testimony from Mr. Remsa, the presentation from Mr. Knoll, Mr. Workman, comments of the engineer, and members of the public, and all of your questions, is there a finding or a motion by the board to find that the proposed improvements are consistent with master plan based upon the testimony, Mr. Remsa, that they promote the goals of the master plan, and a motion to authorize the board secretary and solicitor to communicate that finding with the governing body?
Do you vote for a motion?
Motion for that?
Do we have a move?
Yes.
Two seconds. Okay.
Two seconds.
Move in seconds. Adam, second.
Mr. Yakovich?
Yes.
Mr. Avr?
Yes.
Mr. Koyani?
Yes.
Miss Asier?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Mr. Parker? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Okay, without the application, we'll move on to any matters that can be presented by members of the public.
Louis Lopez, first I want. Louis Lopez from Mahali. I'm just glad to see everybody in person. Appreciate it. And I want to appreciate Mr. Richard Dow for letting me know about this meeting. And if you want to see, there's going to be upload to my YouTube channel and to my Facebook and to the Mahali Group as soon as one hour after I leave, if you want to see the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other matters presented by the public? Matters presented by the planner? Matters presented by the engineer?
I don't have anything.
Matters presented by the solicitor?
So we want to thank the board for, you know, the volunteers' participation this year. It's been a challenging year, and the board's really been in there, and they must put in a lot of hard work for Mount Holly. I appreciate that. I think the board secretary, there's some discussion of the agenda for next year, but we do want to introduce Mr....
Julio Clonkey.
Julio Clonkey.
I call him Mr. Tanner.
It's actually pretty easy to laugh. It's like an Italian name, except it's one...
We call him that, too. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice time.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.